Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone, super glad you're here today.
We're thrilled to have you here today and we are also thrilled to have Julie and Colin from my team here on the call as well. What's up you guys? So as you are coming in, let us know where in the world you are. We're thrilled to have you with us today. Today we're going to be talking about creating online courses with Get Oiling and how that might mean a lot more than you think it does on the surface. There's so much you can do with this feature in our system and we're going to get into some of what that looks like. But most importantly, we're going to get into really a broad level overview. If you have ever considered creating an online course or even just finding a way to, to take what you know and organize it in a way that your customers or your, your brand partners could easily access this kind of information. This is going to be something that's really interesting to you today and you're going to have the opportunity to really get a full lay of the land before you start diving into creating something. So again, head over into the chat, let us know where you are in the world. And of course, we are thrilled to have you with us. I'm going to go ahead and we're going to close out a video and get into some slides so that we can get this show on the road and we will come back and join you with video after we go through today's training. So again, welcome, don't be shy, head over into the chat, let us know in the world, where in the world you are. I see we've got Kansas City, Kelowna, Canada, Phoenix, Arizona, of course, we've got Fargo and Florida and B C and New York City here. Hello Panama, awesome, it's great to see you guys here today, welcome. Alright, so today we've got a lot to cover. We're going to talk about how we can design, create and launch online courses with Get Oiling. So today we're going to get into exactly what this looks like, high level overview, so that you can start thinking about and then getting into planning, whatever it is that you want to be releasing as an online course. Alright, so today we're going to first talk a little bit about why you need an online course. Why even if you've never considered working in the field of online education, online learning, why an online course, at least as a structure as it exists and Get Oiling could be a really useful one for you to make use of. Then we're going to get into what it looks like to design, create and launch your course with Get Oiling. I also have some step-by-step training that I want to connect you to. If you do choose to take this route, there are several options that you can follow that will get you everything that you need in quite a bit more detail than we're able to cover here on this call. And then of course, at the close of this call, as always, we welcome your questions. Live helping Q and A is available here for you and if you are looking for help, we do have our awesome team here on the call. You have questions regardless of whether it pertains to today's topic, you can add those questions to the Q and A, our team can work with you here. Or if it's something that we need to walk through live, showing the screen and that's something that we can do at the close of the call as well. Now, if you watch this as a recording in the future, you can join one of these live calls by going to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you'd like to work together live, like when person is signed up to do today, you can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview and we can dedicate a spot of time at the close of our work session on an upcoming Thursday to work with you hands-on, sharing screen, get into your account, discuss your strategy, whatever it is that you need help with. And if you need a hand in getting things done, if you're in the process of getting all this stuff built, building the website, the member area, the, the vault, the online course that you want, but you want some extra help getting it done, or you'd like to have a professionally designed website, whatever that might look like for you, we have an amazing qualified team who can help you achieve exactly what it is that you're looking to get done with Get Oiling. So you can go to getoiling.com/conceivers to learn more about the team and request a quote for your project. Now let me know in the chat, do you have an online course? And what does that look like for you? Maybe you're using the online class feature and Get Oiling for something that isn't just giving an online class, right? Selling an online course. I'm seeing some not yet, but would like to, awesome. I know there's definitely some folks here who are using the online class feature to organize their oily education content, right? Got some in development, awesome, got one about to launch, oh that's fantastic, very exciting stuff going on with you guys. So let's talk about as a young living brand partner, why an online course is such a great idea for you. There's a number of ways that you can use this structure of basically selling or providing, in cases that you aren't selling, information that you know and need to share and you should be taking advantage of at least one of these things that I'm going to share with you here. So first, having an online course isn't just about selling an online course. It can be something that you use as a tool in your business to save you time and get better results. So one example could be that you use an online course to save yourself time when you're getting a new young living customer started. Right? So you can save a bunch of time with onboarding and educating them so that they know everything that they need to and they can come back and reference what you've shared with them. You can also automate how you educate your brand partners. Maybe you'll record your coaching calls with brand partners and you save those into an online class so that anyone who is a brand partner on your team in the future might be able to benefit from the coaching that you've already done, right? Just one example. We can also organize and deliver our oily education resources. Now, nobody expects you to be a textbook on how to use the young living products, but what's to say you can't provide a digital one, right? So you can use online courses for this purpose as well. And of course, you can add value to how you serve your customers and your team. Imagine a ditch and switch course, not just an article that you read, but something that's interactive, that maybe you run as a live program once or twice a year. That could be so engaging in a way that you are really building community. And then finally, and this is the more traditional model that you would look at with creating an online course, you can position yourself as an expert and get paid for your expertise, which is why most people get started with online courses. So there's so many reasons for you to have an online course, let's talk about how you can get one done. But before we get started, I want to address something really important here. Couple of things that hold most people back from actually getting this done. And the first is that we overanalyze and we do this, we hesitate and we allow that little voice in our brain to say, oh no, maybe there's something wrong here, I shouldn't move forward. What you need to understand about creating this kind of thing is that none of this is an exact science and none of this is academic, right? None of it, right? And unlike publishing a book or creating a work of art that you want to put in an exhibit or show or museum, you can use and even sell your work in progress with an online course. This is not something that you need to spend a year on. This is not something that you really even necessarily need to spend six months on, depending on what it is that you're trying to launch here. If you have never launched and sold something before that is similar to an online course or a program, please don't take a year to launch your first one, please don't take six months to launch your first one. Create something that gets you a win sooner and start learning how to embrace the process instead of focusing on perfection. You have a work in progress that you can use, right? And the cool thing is, if you take this mindset into account, is that you are actually going to create a better end product if you are actually working with your work in progress. The reason for this is that you can get active feedback from the exact kind of person or persons who would eventually be using this without you being present. So you have that benefit of getting feedback so that you can really perfect in a meaningful way, not just in your overanalytic mind criticizing yourself about the work you're doing, but with real world feedback from the people that you want to be serving. And then importantly, if you're wanting to get started with this, you can and should start small with what you have right now and then build upon this point from where you've started. So first, let's talk about what you'll need to get started. So to create an online course, you don't really need a lot of stuff. First thing of course that you need is Get Oiling. And with Get Oiling, you can build your online course, you can host its contents, you can sell and manage the course and its downloads and videos. Canva is another piece, if you're going to be branding your course, which you don't necessarily have to at the outset, but it is definitely something that I recommend that you do eventually. And of course, you can use the free version of Canva for this. You'll use Canva to brand your course as well as to create downloads like workbooks, worksheets, et cetera. If you like to use slides for your videos, if you've been around any of our course content or even our weekly calls, I'm a big fan of using presentation software such as keynote, which is what I'm using right now, PowerPoint if you've got a Mac. But even in Canva, you can create really beautiful slide presentations in Canva as well, doesn't really matter. And this honestly is only something you want to worry about if you are someone that wants to use slides. I'm a proponent of slides as well because it tends to create more timeless content. You can, depending on the time of year, what clothes you're wearing will have an impact on, you know, people knowing that maybe this was filmed in December because there are holiday decorations or you're wearing a sweater. Whereas if you're using slides, something really can feel current for a lot longer. Anyway, I digress, this is optional and it's for slide-based videos. Then of course, you're going to need tools to record your video content. You can absolutely use the Zoom feature and Get Oiling if you are shoestring bootstrapping right now. You can use the Zoom feature and Get Oiling to record yourself and then of course, save that recording to your Get Oiling videos. But you do have the option as well to use your phone, your tablet, your computer, your webcam, or even if you're using a computer or one of these other types of devices, you can use screen recording software as well. And again, Zoom can fit the bill here. This is again optional, but something that I recommend and that is a USB microphone that you would plug into your device just to give you better audio quality and an HD camera. Because again, you know, the cameras that come with our, especially laptop and desktop computers just aren't that awesome. But these again are eventual upgrades, totally optional. And the first many courses that we've released even on this platform were used, we use the built-in stuff, right? Like there's no reason to not start exactly where you are. Okay, so another quick couple of things, I like to use a word processor for outlines and you'll know what that means here in just a moment. And I also love using Trello for, for production, for organization, for project managing this process. So let's talk about what we're going to do, in what order. For the journey of creating and launching an online course is as follows. First, we've got to outline our curriculum, create our content, set up the basics, curate the experience and then finally, launch the course. Okay, so starting with outlining your curriculum, first, I recommend that you use a word processor to create a document in outline form. Super, super duper basic, keep it simple. We're going to break our content down into modules or categories and lessons. And then for each lesson, you want to think about what's going to be included for the following features of your lessons. Video content, not necessary, but definitely optimal. Downloads, again, not necessary, but it's a really good idea to give people something to do with the information that you, that you provide. Lesson copy, that's actually what you're telling someone to do when they are on the lesson itself. And then any discussion prompts if you plan to encourage discussion with that particular lesson content. Okay, so this is what's in the outline, you're going to say section one is titled this. Section one encompasses three, these three topics, lesson one, lesson two, lesson three. And then each of those lessons, you're going to have video content, downloads, lesson copy and discussion prompts. You may have some of these, but not others. But you just want to make sure that you think through these for your planning process. And if you are confused about what to do, ask AI. So here's an example that I gave with our write with AI feature in Get Oiling. I told it that I'm creating a course on creating clean and green home. So I'm asking the AI to create a course outline that breaks down the process of a mom of young kids, what she would follow to ditch toxic products and switch to young living products and cleaner, greener ways of living. And let you know, we've got an eight-part course outline that AI created for us, right? So now you can see over here, the outline is done and we can actually see that we've got our modules or our categories and then under those, we've got our individual lessons. If you can see what I'm seeing here with this, this example where we have the Roman numerals, those are our modules or categories where we have the uppercase letters, then you can see the actual titles of our lessons. Now, if you are ready to create video for these and you need a script, ask AI, it can help you, right? So I'm asking it to write a video script for the first lesson in my course, which is titled, "Why Switch to Green Cleaning Products?" And of course, it's giving me a great script here that I can follow. If you want copy for your downloads, in this case, I'm asking them to write copy for a printable PDF handout that lists the toxins found in most common household cleaning products and the harm they cause to the body. Here we go, voila. Copy, that's a clipboard, pop it into your online class. If you want lesson copy, of course, you can put that here as well and ask for lesson copy. Want discussion prompts, AI's got you covered there as well. I'm asking them to write a discussion prompt here for the lesson titled, "Understanding Current Healthful Cleaning Products" and the question is provided for us here. So after I've outlined, which you can see an example of this over on the left-hand side of the screen, I've outlined everything here. I have then moved over to Trello where I have taken this outline and for each category, I've created a list in Trello and I have created a card for every lesson. Now, if you've never used Trello before, don't worry, this is not something that's absolutely necessary. But once you start moving over into the process of creating and organizing things like downloads, video, discussion prompts, things like that, especially if you're collaborating with somebody, this becomes an indispensable tool, having a Trello board like this. So this is what I personally love to use. I do have a template version of this that I'll make sure you guys know how to get access to by the close of our call here today. It is free for you to use. Now, let's get into creating your content. Now we've planned everything out and by the way, I am seeing the chat. I will absolutely share here in just a moment because now we're actually talking about the creation of our content. I will share with you some of these, the things that I use and do and the things that I recommend personally. So first, let's talk about what it means to create your content. If you're using slide decks, you want to go ahead and create your slides. What I love doing for this purpose is to create three or four slides. So one like the one that you're looking at here where it's got a title and it's got bullet points. There are others that you'll often see me use that have a single line in the middle where I'll make more of a statement, right? And then of course, we've got our opening and our closing slides or anything that you would repeat in any lesson. So create those and then use those to save yourself time, duplicate them and create all of the slides that you need for your modules. And so what that is, is batching your work, right? So what we're going to do here is create all of our slides for an entire module at a time, right? Before we film them and upload them to Get Oiling. And again, you can absolutely just be a talking head in your video, 100% acceptable if that's something that you want to do. Or if you are using a more professional studio setting, of course, you'd be standing in front of a screen, you know, like a green screen or something like that, when you actually perform your content. Now next, we want to film our videos. Now, I've seen a few questions here. When I first got started with creating online courses, I actually used, and I do have a Mac and I've been a Mac user for a very long time. So Screenflow is something that I purchased a long time ago that, that I use for this purpose. And I honestly don't know how to use 90% of its capabilities. But, but it's something that I have used for creating online courses. The good news for you is that you can use Zoom for this purpose. And then there are also really great softwares that aren't even as expensive as Screenflow that obviously work on computers that aren't just a Mac. And, and of course, there are free versions that are perfectly good for you to use. In terms of the camera, I did use, again, for the longest time, the built-in webcam on a laptop or a desktop computer. I have upgraded to an HD, I use a Logitech HD Stream Cam. It was very hard to find during COVID. They were absolutely, everybody was moving to Zoom, it was hard to find a good one. I've been through a couple, that this one's my current favorite. I have used blue microphones, which are USB microphones. If you have one of the newer MacBooks that only have USB-C, I have a three-part adapter that I just bought off of Amazon that when I'm traveling and I need to do stuff like this, I can actually plug both the USB-A microphone and the USB-C lap camera straight into it. So there are adapters, highly recommend that you grab those, try them out. Make note of your return windows, just in case things don't work and obviously test things out. So when we want to film our videos, I personally really love using slides because it's just so streamlined and easy and it feels fresh longer as content. And the way I batch my work for filming my videos is if I have created my slide decks and I've created them for the full, a full module, for instance, I will film an entire module in one setting, right? I'll just, I'll hit record screen, I'll talk and flip through, I'll stop the recording, I'll, I'll hit record again and I go through that process, then I go back and do any trimming that needs to be done where that's necessary and then upload those to Get Oiling. It just saves a ton of time. If you're going to try to think up one lesson, come up with its download, come up with its content, come up with its video, you're going to spend honestly, I think 10 times more time using that approach than simply saying, here are all of my slides. Now I'm going to film all of my slides. Right? Good question Lori for trimming video. You can, I'll tell you two ways. Number one, if you're using a screen recording software such as Screenflow, they have really sophisticated ways you can go about using trim and editing features. And that is one that I have, again, just the tiniest knowledge of how to use, just to the extent of what I need to use it for. But there is a built-in software on a Mac called QuickTime and then Positive, there's something that is equivalent to this on PCs. And you could of course do this on your phone or your tablet as well, if the, if the video is on your phone or tablet. Is that you open it up and you can actually just go to the trim feature. So there's an edit menu, there's a trim function and then you can slide it in from either side. There may be again, more sophisticated ways that you can do this, but I don't know them personally. I only edits the very front of the video and because, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, because I like to keep content in courses very short, it's actually easier to just refilm a section for me personally, because I'm not an editor and I don't want to have to wait on an editor to get stuff out. Alright, so back to this, we're batching our work here. Then of course, if you're creating downloads in Canva, you want to make sure those are done. If the downloads are something like a workbook or worksheet, if it's an exercise that you're demonstrating for the lesson, you may want to move the create downloads here to the very top of this list so that you can reference those and show images of them in your slides or have a printed version to point out on the video when you film it. Of course, again, this is the place where you want to batch your work, get all of those downloads done. Don't try to go download, video, upload, et cetera. And then finally, as a pro tip, as you are creating this content and getting it finished, make sure that you are adding any links to your designs that you create in Canva onto the corresponding boards, the lesson cards on your Trello board, because that's going to help you stay really organized and quickly and easily find the things that you need. Put your final downloadable version there, have the link to the original design there, et cetera, so that you can really obtain those and make any changes that you need to when it's time to. Now we've got our stuff made, it's time to put it in place so that we can actually use it. So first, you want to make sure you set up your member area in Get Oiling if you haven't done so already. This is very simple, just make sure that the title and the copy and the images are neutral to your brand, right? So if you're creating a, your, the purpose of creating your online course is to onboard and educate your new young living customers, that's not going to be the title and purpose of your member area. Your member area is the container that holds these things called vaults, vaults hold your online classes. And so you would actually be creating a vault that is dedicated to serving your young living customers. But you may have another vault that is teaching yoga classes or, you know, offering DIY pet care tips or something like that. So keep your, your member area neutral, brand it like you brand your website. Then you're going to create the vault that will contain your course and this one you will brand to your course. And then you will create the online class for your course and of course, you will brand that to your course as well. So the vault and the online class will share similar branding. So at this point, once you've got these things in your Get Oiling system, you can then invite your existing clients, your colleagues, your friends to come in and beta test your content, go through the content to give you feedback and testimonials. If you are building a group off of Facebook to serve your young living people, put them in there as soon as you have a discussion room and involve them in and have them get invested in the production of future content here, right? Don't wait until something is some level of perceived perfect for you to start moving forward. Don't get into perfection paralysis. At this point where you've got something that you can share in your system, put people in there and start sharing it. It's going to help you immensely. So once we've done that, we can fine tune our product and get it ready to launch to the great, to the larger public. And to do this, we want to first curate our experience. So what is it that we want to happen when somebody purchases or gains access, whether free or paid? And how do we want them to be self-guided or guided via automation through this process? So first, we have to ask ourselves, what will happen post-purchase? So after they have purchased or after they have been added to this resource, what will they see? What will they receive from you when they check out? So you want to create a confirmation page and a vault campaign. That confirmation page is where they're going to go as soon as they've been added, as soon as they have purchased, if you're selling this. And then of course, a vault campaign is something that is in the actual vault setup where you can, of course, encourage people to download the Attract Well app so that they can get access to your course content on the go. And, and you also are giving them an opportunity to go in and create their password. Do you want to share any other information with them? Is there anything else that they need to know, right? This is something that we want to think through and then create these two resources to help guide them toward their next steps. Don't think that people are going to just intuitively know where to go and what to do. You absolutely have to spell this stuff out. Next, you want to ask yourself, how will they interact with your course content? It can be something that's self-paced, so they just log in and they move forward. Whenever, wherever, it could be something that is group oriented, where you're all doing the same thing together at the same time. It could be a community or you could use this as a sort of framework or a guide for one-on-one clients. So let's talk about what these different experiences can look like and some of the settings that you might want to put in place in your Get Oiling system when you're setting up this online course. So first, we want to think about their interactions with content, with you, with the vault in general. First, we want to make sure if you want this feature, that you have enabled discussion on your lessons. So you may have already, if you want to have people discussing the content or asking questions or talking at all with you or with each other on the individual lessons, you may have already written that out. So we want to make sure that we are in the individual class lessons, enabling discussion on those, if that's a feature that you want to see being used. You could create a discussion room in the vault as well, which would be a more general catch-all place for folks to communicate with you and with one another. You also want to think about reminders. So this is an opportunity for your system on your behalf to show up on their, in their inbox if they maybe haven't moved ahead or logged in within a certain number of days or a week or something like that. So we can have a remember, a reminder for them to return after that's that number of days, which you set. You also want to think about content gating. And so essentially, this is allowing you to curate the experience that you want for them. So just as an example, if the nature of your online course content is sequential, then you don't necessarily want your, your students to be able to access the very end of the course before they've completed the very beginning, right? So you wouldn't want them to access lessons in any order in that case. However, if something that you're doing is, you know, is DIY focused or oily education focused, then maybe you do want them to access those lessons in any order. You can also have them complete lessons in a specific order or even have those lessons released after a certain number of days. So maybe you have an online course and it's showing them how they can ditch and switch in 14 days. And so these lessons are going to be released on day one, day two, day three, et cetera, right? That is an option that you have. So you don't have to use any of these settings specifically, but these are options that you want to really think through and think about the experience that you want your person to have and that's going to facilitate the best outcome for them. Now for a group setting, we're going to consider interactions that will, of course, have them interact with the content on the actual contents pages, so that the lessons and the online class. And I do recommend having that. And I do recommend having that and I recommend having a discussion room here as well, because a group experience. Or a community, this is going to apply to you if you have a group coaching program, it's going to apply to you if you are moving. Your young living groups off of Facebook, you want to provide opportunities for people. To communicate with one another, to share their questions, to share their stories and recommendations, right? So wherever discussion is, is available for a group setting, I recommend having it on. And you may also, in a group setting, have scheduled calls. And so if that is the case, then you may create a page inside of your course vault. That outlines what the call schedule is, maybe has a link to join the Zoom call in progress and where you may even store your. Your recordings from your previous calls. You also want to again, have reminders to engage with content. And that's simply going to be a reminder to return to the vault after a certain number of days to come back and pick up where they left off. A date based campaign is also a really great tool. If you're running a group program where everybody is moving through the same experience together. Maybe you launch it on a particular date and everybody moves through. A great example of this would be a book club. If you're hosting a book club. Then of course you're going to have the, the book club launch on a particular calendar date. And then for the next however many weeks, you're going to be meeting on certain days and times. And your campaign that you create is going to perhaps. Remind them of the call that you have coming up and tell them, hey, the replay is up and it's on this page in the vault or come over here and discuss. Here's the link to the discussion room, et cetera. Content gating for a group can really run the gamut. It depends on what you want the group experience to be. Often if this is, again, if it's replacing a Facebook group. Then accessing lessons in any order may be really useful if this is general oily education information. But if your online class is really about helping someone get started with young living, then you may want to have the lessons be completed in order. You can also, again, if it's a group experience that everybody's going through like a book club. Then you could also maybe have those for lesson, those lessons release on a calendar date, which is definitely an option as well. And then released after a certain number of days. If everybody is being added to the vault at the same time, then you can have a group experience that way as well. Now, if you wanted to create a one on one client dashboard using online courses in get oiling, you can do that. The interactions would be set up to enable discussion on those online class lessons. That is optional. It's not my personal preference. I would prefer to keep a discussion room between you and the client. And then just have them, have the content be gated. But there's obviously, it's up to you and how you want to work with your client. You can also have your call booking page. So if that client needs to be on regularly scheduled calls with you. Then the link to actually go and, and maybe access the calendar directly. Can be embedded or linked off to from right there in the vault. Reminders to engage with content, again, as in all other cases, you can remind them to return to the vault after a certain number of days. And for content gating for one on one clients, it's really going to be based on. How you work with the client. If your material in your online course is. Is, is more of a reference point that they may need to access in different orders, then you could access the lessons in any order. You could have them, if it's sequential, complete the lessons in order. And of course you have all of those options available to you when you're setting this up. Now, we've gone through all of these, like, here's all the things you could do. Let's talk about what actually just needs to get done either way. First, we need to make sure that you write some kind of copy. That invites your person to come back after they haven't logged in for a few days. If you need help, ask AI and it can write something for you. And we're going to add this in the reminders tab in your vault setup. You'll also want to, of course, add discussion prompts to your classes, where you want to include them. And add a discussion room to the vault, if that is something that makes sense for the design of your course. You can modify how your students advance to the next lesson in your online class. Then finally, create or add any pages to your vault where necessary. Such as a guide page that can kind of give them the lay of the land of what the experience is going to be like and what they should do next. I often see that called a start here page. If you've been in any of our courses and get oiling, we often have what we call a start here page. A calls page, if you are going to be hosting calls, that's one that you'll often see in our vaults as well. And then maybe a book a call page, if, if this is a place where folks might have that opportunity to get on a one on one with you. And you have a calendar embed on a page and get oiling, you could put that into your vault as well. Now we're getting into our final steps here. We're going to set ourselves up to launch and sell this thing. So that means we need to set ourselves up to take payment if this is something that we're selling. And of course, also you need to know what to do if you aren't selling it, but giving it away to your young living customers, for example. So the first option here is that your online course is free, there's no payment required. This is something that you give to your customers or to your brand partners. In that case, you're going to want to create a page or a landing page that adds the contact to the vault. Right? It's going to add them for free. If you are selling an online course for a one time payment, they pay once they get access to the course. Then you can create a page or a vault checkout page. Or a listing in the online store, if you have that set up on your good oiling account. And of course they can get access to your vault from there. If you have a multi-part payment, if, if this is a monthly membership, if it's an annual payment, if it is. A payment plan of six payments of whatever. If you have more than one payment that is required to access the content, then you're going to want to set up a vault checkout page. And of course, add those payment options at the vault level. Just make sure that any of those additional campaigns, automations, confirmation pages, et cetera. Are attached to the point of purchase that you're creating, one of these things that I've just shared with you here on this page. And then if you want to use sales tools to close the deal and get people into your online course. You're of course going to want to have a sales page, a sales campaign. And a lead to sales funnel. And so what basically that's going to look like is you want a page. That's going to tell them what they're going to get when they buy. And then of course, they have an opportunity to buy right there on the page or go to the vault checkout page. A sales campaign would be something that's applied to certain contacts that will be sending messages to them. Over a period of days or weeks that is going to link to the sales page or to the vault checkout page, encouraging them to go and purchase. And then this lead to sales funnel essentially is figuring out. And if you went through the, the marketing mastery workshop series, then this will be familiar to you. If not, don't worry, it's free training. It's available to you as a good oiling customer. What we want to do is identify our conversion event. For selling this thing. So if it is, if, if the conversion event. Is simply going to a sales page and reading sales messages in a campaign. That's great. You can simply connect that to your lead generating funnel. But if you have other things that you use, so let's just say you have a program, for instance, and you want to. Speak with someone before you offer them the opportunity to purchase or you invite them to a live event, et cetera. We want to, and want to include that to our lead funnel. So basically if you have a, a lead funnel on your website, where let's just say you're offering. You know, 14 steps to green your home. Then on the next page after they opt in, you can say, hey, I'm offering a free consult. Or hey, I have a course that actually sells that, that tells you how to do all of this in detail, right? So you're going to provide one of those opportunities in the funnel that you already have. And you'll attach that sales campaign to that conversion event so that people have that exposure. On autopilot because they have opted in to your lead funnel. So with that, you're ready to launch. And I know this was a lot and I know there's a lot to cover here, but that really is the lay of the land. And you notice that about midway through this, there's a way for you to get started before you even get any of the more technical stuff. Done, right? And I want to encourage you to do that, to actually start working with what you have right now. Don't put off another six months or a year to start sharing your expertise and having this make a difference in the lives of others. And in your bottom line. So let's get into this. If you are wanting to get started, I want to share a couple more best practices with you. And then we'll get into some resources you can follow to get all this done. First, bite size your content. That means not creating an hour long video for each lesson, but creating one that is. Five minutes, 10, 15 minutes, right? Make it small because people will be more likely to actually watch all of it and do something with it. Incorporate assignments so that people take action on the thing that they learned. This is. My number one tip for keeping people from Netflix thing, your content is to incorporate and assignments and maybe even require. That they be submitted before they move ahead. You can build in testimonial solicitation. And what this means is, is in your discussion prompts. Or in the campaign emails that you have going out throughout your course. You can be asking people to reach out and tell, that tell you about where they were when they started and what has happened for them now. So you can actually start creating those testimonials that will eventually sell your course most effectively. And then of course, you want to make sure that you live launch and or beta test this product. And then use a guide page, that's that start here page and then reiterate instructions often because you can't just expect people to remember what to do when they show up. You've got to tell them what to do. It's not rude. It's actually going to help people get the response, the outcome. That they signed up for, that they're looking for. But most importantly, remember this, everything that you do here is editable and improvable. And focus on progress over perfection. Now we do have a course that teaches this in full. And we're actually going to be refreshing this here soon with some live content. So if you would like access to that, if you want to be challenged into creating that first online course for your business. You can go over to our sister platform attract well, it's attractwell.com/onlinecourse. That'll get you access to what we already have there. And I really just have given you a kind of a rundown of the entirety of what we do, except we go into detail in there. So get access to this. It is free to you. And if you are really looking more with a priority on taking care of your young living crew. Before building out an online course in a traditional sense or a program. Then you can go to get oiling.com/moveyourgroups and you can learn how to follow a really similar process. But specifically to create an experience that you can invite your young living folks to, to help them. Learn more about products, integrate product into their life. And of course, get you that retention and that engagement that you're looking for in your business. Alright, so now let's get into some life helping Q and A. I am really excited to hear from you guys. What are you planning to launch? What are you going to get started with, with an online course? Are you going to create a, a place for your young living people? To, to learn and grow? Are you going to create an online program? Maybe you have a, a coaching program that you'd like to launch. What will that look like for you? Let us know in the chat. And I also have, there was a request for a live review today. And Donna, if you're here. Here we go. I will bring you out to chat. Hi, thanks for coming out today.
Hello.
Hi.
That was a lot of information.
It's an overview, but you, if you, if you decide that you want to go down that route, we do have a course that will let you go at your own pace, just one piece at a time.
Okay, so what I'm doing is an event and I know I didn't give it enough time. For a lot of people to get into it, but I want to know how to set it up. So I've tried to set it up with the course that you had on setting up an event. So I wanted you to check and see if it's kind of got all the parts. That are needed for, I'm doing it in person and on Zoom. So that's kind of how I've set it up. So. Bit of, I used a bit of AI to see how to invite people and things like that. So. It's kind of on emotions and faith based kind of things. So.
Fantastic. So is it an event in your good oiling account?
It should be. Yes, yes. The Mother's Day self-care workshop.
Perfect. Okay. Self-care workshop. Oh, I love it. This is wonderful. Okay, that's great. And so folks are just going to RSVP here. So what else do we have set up here on the backend? Or what are, what are your plans for, for running and promoting this event?
So I have a DIY. Sequence that they get when they register. I think.
Okay.
Supposed to be.
Okay.
I kind of did it for myself. So I was seeing if it would work that way.
Okay, got you. So, so when somebody comes and, and opts in here, they're, they're going to start receiving a series of emails. Is that right?
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. Here we go.
And what I'd like to do is have them kind of say which ones are, you know, the, in my group, I've kind of got a poll. And which ones they're most interested in. Like some of them are for relaxation and some of them are for breathing better and things like that. So.
Okay. Awesome.
And then I had, I had the welcome, the welcome to the Mother's Day. Self-care with, I wasn't sure if I should have like a PDF there or if that's alright or.
No, I, I think this is totally fine. I think actually, let's, let's talk about this a little bit. So this is. This is great. This is the first thing that you want to send, but, but I want to point. Out something here that we have two day zero messages. And so this classic diffuser recipes is one that they may potentially receive from you before. They get this recommend, this, this one here. So I would actually recommend that you. Yeah. So they, they could get it at the same time, but it is potentially they could get this first. And that's not what we want. We want them to get this one first, right? So let's see if we can maybe, maybe we'll put this one down on. On day nine for now.
Okay.
Alright, there we go. So, alright, so we've got our spritzes and sprays, chest rub, et cetera, are the, let me see. My only concern in, in, in including all of this immediately. Is if we come back over here, so this is going to happen here in a couple of days. And, and what we really want to make sure that we're focusing on. Is getting everybody who says yes right here to show up, right?
Okay.
Yes. And, and this is going to be in person. So what I would probably recommend is that. Here, here's what I would do and we don't have to keep these settings, but we want this to go out on a specific date. And let's say, so since your event is going to be on Saturday.
Okay.
We, right? We want to have. Let's start the campaign. Let's start it today, actually. And then we can add a new message that reminds them about the. Our event is tomorrow.
Right, okay.
Right? Right? And then you're going to reiterate the details in here, right? So that gets added. And so this we want to put on day one. And, and then what, what we would do here is we would actually take like all of these great things that you have here. I want to send those out after the event, right?
Oh, I see. Okay.
Right? Ev- everything before the event, we want to really encourage them to show up. But then after the event, they start getting those reminders of the event, whether they made it or not. And they can actually start engaging more with that content. So what I would encourage you to do. Is to maybe we'd go in and we would change this to probably day three.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah.
Right? And then we would go forward from there. So it's start sending the day after, right? And so everything would be sending. Everything would be sending after that, that date.
Right, right. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Should I be putting something like with the, like when I'm sending out chest rub? Would it be good for me to put a, like a little testimonial or something with that? Rather than just the, yeah, so, yeah.
You spot on. And actually, because this may also be going out via email. I would, I would reiterate in all of these that you're sending out, that they're related to the Mother's Day self-care workshop.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
And then I would also like, so in this particular instance. And, and I know it's coming up here pretty soon, so I, I wouldn't necessarily do this. But I would spend more time promoting and getting people there in person and worrying about the tech stuff. But in the future, if you wanted to reuse something like this, you could actually go in and create leaf links. Using this, using our leaf link here to actually allow them to go and shop for these, these items. Or you could create a wishlist in, in your young living. That includes these products and then, you know, shop this list here. And so you could then reuse this for future. Yeah. So yeah, I, I would provide a little bit of an additional context and then maybe for this welcome, you would say. You know, look forward to having you over. Here's our place. uh, you know, look forward to having you over. Here's our place. Uh, you know, feel free to bring a friend, et cetera. And then our event is tomorrow. And then maybe even today's the day on on the um, and that would need to be your, right? So you you would have a today's the day email. Uh, and then just remind them, you know, hey, after um, you know, keep an eye out on your email. Uh, because starting on Sunday, I'm going to send you uh, for a week, you know, or two weeks, a daily, uh, you know, some some fun daily tips or something like that.
Okay, that's so helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Does I I hope that that makes sense.
Yes, it does. Um, is it well for you to show me how I could put that in uh, uh, in the member area? Like if, if I had people coming in that wanted to see how to do a DIY?
Oh, so the the actual, so like the images that are in in here?
Yes.
Got you. Is this uh, go ahead.
Or something that would go along with that in the member area.
Yeah, so so what what I would do is is just take the content of these emails uh, and I would create an online class uh, that goes over each of them. So uh, so and and so the the first lesson would be chest rub. The next lesson would be sugar scrubs. The next lesson would be body butter, et cetera.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you check my member area and see? I've just done it in little bits and pieces and not quite understood how to do it. So.
Yeah, sure.
Kind of starting to figure it out.
Okay, so which one um, which one do we want to take a look at?
Uh, building the healthy body and brain and spirit. Maybe that's too many things at one time, but.
Ah, that's okay. Oh, I need to go over here. And then we can take a look. Ooh, that is big and pretty. I like it. Okay. Um, building a healthy body, brain and spirits.
So I was just trying to put um, thing like I was trying to put some of the girl workspace things. I'm I'm concentrating a lot on older women who have emotions that they're trying to sort out and that kind of thing.
Yeah, got you. Okay, so here's a couple of things. Uh, so number one, um, what we want to do in this uh, this section here is we actually want to take this content and actually plug it into one of these online classes. Uh, so uh, and so so what we'll do here is we'll say welcome, uh, choose one of the options below to get started, right? So that way she knows to come down here and click. But these are all, yeah, so these are all uh, online classes, these. You can see the little, the little hat. And so what we would do here, and let me go back to our vaults. What we would do here is we would go click this guy. And then in immune system one oh one, um, and actually what I would call this, I I would call this class, this this is the online course. This is, this is where you would actually have immune system one oh one would be one of the lessons. Uh, but then I would combine these, right? So I think these are, these are sways, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So I would actually, um, instead of having, so these are each individual online classes. I would combine them into one. And so this, um, you would have immune system one oh one, but maybe the next one is natural living. Right? Uh, and then you would put that content there in the lesson. And so then what would happen here? We come back over here. Um, if we obviously would want to change the name of from immune system one oh one to something different, but now they can click here and then click here. And they can actually peruse these all together without having to leave the online class.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, the the final thing that I want to show and share with you here is you can actually embed your sway. So as of right now, it looks like if we go in here to immune system one oh one and we click the contents of your online class, click here to get class actually opens up. Was actually not opening anything. Um, but I I think it's supposed to go to a sway. So let's.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, but I didn't quite know how to.
Yeah. So the reason why it's not actually going where you want it to go is because we have this hashtag here in the front. So I'm going to delete that.
Okay.
And and when we update and save this, then you'll actually be able to see that this will take you to the sway in a new
Oh.
And a new screen. However, we don't want, we don't want them to leave. We want them to stick around in your member area. So I'm going to go over here to share. And I'm going to click get embed code. Now all this this information that I'm sharing with you right now, this is in the how to move your groups course. Uh, we do teach this. So but I'm going to come over here, back to our immune system one oh one. And instead of putting this here, I'm going to embed the class here, which I believe if we go to add video, this should work.
Yeah, and that's new too, that we can do that part, the video.
Yeah. Okay, this is my Safari. I reinstalled my operating system and it is still just bonkers weird. Let's try this again. Like slow to load and doing weird stuff. Okay, uh, so we got to add video. You see what it's doing? It's wacky. I don't know why it's doing this. Well, okay, well, what we'll do instead, and I'm sure it's not happening on other people's devices, it's just my weird one here. I'm going to go to code view. Going to go to code view here and I'm going to paste. And it's just what I I clicked get embed code.
Okay.
And I'm just pasting it here. And now your sway is on your page.
Oh, great. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's.
So now you can actually keep them right there. They don't have to go off to another place.
Okay. And then probably what would be good is if I do a class in a video of 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 my testimony and the class, like kind of my own introduction or something like that. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. And then you would be able to, in the same content here, um, you you would be able to add that video here.
Right. Oh, wow. That's so good. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Glad we could help.
Thank you so much. Wow.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming out, Donna. All right. So um, okay, Jolene had a question here. I have a question. Perhaps Ashley can expand on the topic of being events. I was wondering if she could show how to automate a registration from an email and also automate a response with a workshop worksheet to be emailed at the day of the event. Uh, so Jolene, what you're going to do, uh, number one is you're going to create a database campaign that's going to um, email that uh, that worksheet for the day of the event. Okay? Then you're going to create an automation and the automation is going to apply the campaign. And it's going to register or RSVP them for the event. Of course, this assumes you have the event created already. So it's going to RSVP them for the event. It's going to apply that campaign. Or you could have the the campaign applied to the event itself as well, uh, so that when they RSVP, they get this. But you could also just do it all with an automation. Um, and and then the final piece that you would want to do, because you're going to have somebody click from an email, is you want to have a confirmation page. Uh, and so in the automation setup, uh, I'll just run over since I'm in Donna's here, under automations. Um, you would just be creating an automation under advanced. Uh, so our first action would be to RSVP for the event. The next action would be to apply the campaign. And then, of course, we would want to send them to that confirmation page. And then uh, you would be taking the keyword or you hit copy here once you created it. Uh, and then that's the link that you're getting them to click from email to register for the event. And that would then apply that campaign to get the um, the worksheet. I hope that makes sense. And um, and I hope that opening code you didn't scare anybody. You definitely don't have to do that. Um, awesome. So what about, let me see, were there any other questions, you guys? Um, doing a 10-day personal development course, Deborah says, what is recommended? One outfit or 10? They'll roll out each day. Nobody's paying that close attention. I mean, if if you're, if you're, if this is a fashion course, then obviously change, like have 10 outfits. Uh, but if if that's not something that's of high values to the people that you are uh, you're presenting to, nobody's really going to notice or or care. Uh, and then I think also importantly, um, if i- in personal development, for instance, and this is, it's a course in personal development, uh, depending on what type of personal development you're teaching, it might actually be good for them to notice that, hey, you know what? She was probably honoring her time and creating all of this all at once, because that's a smart thing to do. I think people see that kind of thing. I wouldn't worry too much about it. So fantastic. I am so excited that you guys were able to join us and stick around and learn about creating an online course. Uh, Allison says, is there a way to create a campaign that I can use over and over for registering for a Zoom? Um, yes, if the Zoom link is uh, the join link for Zoom is a recurring one, uh, then that link can be put into a campaign and that campaign can um, uh, can can go out over and over again. Uh, if if it's an event, like an event in your events manager and get oiling, that's a different story. Uh, but if it is simply like, here's the link, like our our call is going to be at whatever time, here's the link to join it. That is a campaign message that you could use over and over again, provided that you're using the same Zoom uh, link uh, as a recurring Zoom event or Zoom link in your um, in your your Zoom manager. Let me see. Uh, Jolene, so uh, the the new content for the how to build your online course course uh, is not going to be wildly different from what's already there. We're just going to be updating some of it with some of our newer features like AI, which you've recently learned about, uh, hosting video, things like that. So uh, the the general uh, feel of it, if you're, if you're on our regular calls and you're up to date with things that have changed in our system, then um, then there's no harm in getting started. Now we're going to actually start rolling that out here in the next couple of weeks, those changes uh, and doing some live calls with you guys. So um, so by all means, get started with what's there because uh, especially the stuff that takes the most time, which is the planning and the actual creation of the content, get the putting all the stuff into get oiling, well, it can take you like honestly, max an hour if you've done your work in an organized fashion. Uh, you can have it all done and set up and ready to go. Uh, so um, by the time it's time to do that, don't worry, you'll have everything up to date. Um, let me see, a blog writing course, Sarah. We don't have a blog writing course. However, we do have some SEO-focused and blog-focused uh, trainings on our YouTube channel. Highly recommend that you check those out. Several of those are very in-depth. Uh, I I would argue about as in-depth as some basic, you know, blog writing courses that you can buy online. So I definitely give that a shot. We so appreciate you guys for being here. Deborah says AI helps her with her elevator pitch. That's an awesome idea. Um, Laurel, we actually had a training last week um, on our YouTube channel. You can check that out. Or if you log into your good oiling, just look for this right with AI, right over here on your dashboard. Click it, tell it what you want. And of course, it will provide something pretty cool for you. So um, definitely recommend you check out the training from last week, though. Um, awesome. All right. Well, thank you guys for being here, for sticking around, being an amazing community. Keep the conversation going over in our Facebook group. And of course, we'll be back here same time next week at noon Eastern. Have a great week, everybody.